All this meeting to order, would everyone stand while the Cedar Grove Choir leads us in pledge and they're gonna come around, are they gonna stay there or they're gonna come around for us? We've got a moment of silence, we'll call them after that.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have a moment of silence and during this time, I would hope that we would have our thoughts and prayers to go to Mr. Jernigan's family, he lost his mother this past week. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Don't move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval is consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, number six, Mr. Gill.
Okay, we have some special guests here tonight, the Cedar Grove Elementary School Choir. They probably don't know it, but I was the principal at Cedar Grove at one time. Did any of y'all know that at all? There's two, well, okay, there you go.
It's that big picture that's in the lobby.
Doctor Burns thinks they've been briefed. Anyway, we're really delighted to have you guys here tonight to perform for us and I don't know, Mr. Gillian, I know you enjoy public speaking, anything you want to say or? Okay. Alright, that said, you guys, welcome. If, there'd be a real television opportunity if you guys want to follow around this way and have them face the camera and they can record it and keep it for years. Yeah, yes, sir.
Good evening, Wally, getting ready? We're so happy to be here today, the opportunity to sing some of all these songs, my name is Mr. Hugo Sanchez, I'm a leading teacher at Cedar Grove Elementary and I'm coming as actually also the second leading teacher at Cedar Grove, Mr. Tyson Hoppen. So delighted to be here again and I hope you enjoy looking for three songs, some of the repertoire would be in. So, we just saw how we present to Cedar Grove Elementary Choir's first song that we're going to break to you.
Joy to the world, the Lord is come, let earth receive our peace. Let every heart prepare it grew, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and heaven and nature sing. Joy to the world, the Lord is come, let earth receive our peace. Let every heart prepare it grew, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and heaven and nature sing. And heaven and heaven and nature sing. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this joyous season. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this time of year. Feel the magic in the air, holiday lights shine everywhere. Feel the magic all around, in the smiles of people in our town. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this joyous season. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this time of year. Red, green, and gold and white, still sparkle in the night. Green and red and white and gold, such a lovely sight to behold. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this joyous season. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this time of year. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this joyous season. Holiday lights shining so bright, oh what a sight this time of year. Oh, what a sight this time of year. Those holiday lights.
To end with, it could be more exciting than a song like "Holiday Lights" and be listening for the next twenty some days we have left in here, at least not yet.
Feliz Navidad, feliz navidad, feliz navidad, dos perros año en felicidad. Feliz navidad, feliz navidad, feliz navidad, dos perros año en felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz navidad, feliz navidad, feliz navidad, dos perros año en felicidad. Feliz navidad, feliz navidad, feliz navidad, dos perros año en felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
Want to remind everyone that this will be on TV on Channel 19 Comcast, so if you'd like to record it, you certainly will have it. And we'll give them a minute to leave. And we really appreciate the music and especially at this time of year, it's really nice to have the music. Any board members want to say anything, go ahead.
Just great job, that was very enjoyable.
Mr. Gillian, I'm proud that you, that you did this, that's a good job. One of my old students there.
He's not that old.
I am.
I just think we ought to be proud of these parents that come with the children and share in what they've done.
I guess you set the standard there, Mr. Gillian, it's still being carried out. No comment. We have one visitor tonight, Mr. Glass, if you want to come forward and speak and I'll remind you, and I know you already know you have three minutes.
Three minutes, I will dispense with all the niceties. And I will not be rehashing what I talked about the last time, there are just some points that I did not get out that I really think you all need to consider when you think about or have discussion about this issue of the grandfather, grandfathering of siblings at Segal. First of all, the top chart, that information is a kind of a drill down by Mr. Morgan for me, Mr. Morgan and Mr. Clarity. I sent them a blank spreadsheet with the families one through sixteen down the side and they were kind enough to fill in the grade of the high school student, the middle school student, and what school they attend. And in summary, of those sixteen kids, there are eight at Segal Middle School who at some point will have a, be in a different high school than their sibling in Segal High School. There are two others, one at Last Cassus, one at McFadden, so the total number in this whole county that we're talking about sending to two different high schools is eight children. I've put my notes right on this cover page so that you won't forget them. Involvement in extracurricular activities, I've discovered is the third most important factor in getting into college and securing college scholarships, that's right behind your GPA and your SAT scores. Families with children in two different high schools will be at a competitive disadvantage scholastically and financially because of conflicting priorities. Extracurricular activities take place in the morning, after school, and on weekends, and parents can't be in two places at once when they're in two different high schools and the school district does not provide transportation for any extracurricular activities that I'm aware of. By grandfathering students, students who would otherwise be at two different high schools are simply put on equal footing, they are not getting an advantage, they are just being put on equal footing with every other high school student in this county. As far as I know, there is no other situation in the county in this round of new schools and rezoning where we're asking children to attend two different high schools. In the past, the board has recognized the need for a transition plan, i.e. sibling grandfathering, to address these types of situations. The most recent instance was the Riverdale Blackman situation was approved on January 28th, 2009, less than a year ago. The attachment that you have, it is called the Segal Parent Newsletter, I get it every week by email and it goes to my next point, and that is that parents are asked to make significant financial and time commitments to the high school their children attend. And being asked to support two high schools hurts both the family and the school because we can't give full support to either school and the family is forced to limit participation at both schools. So I leave you with the question, why would we not make this change when there is absolutely no cost, financial or otherwise, to this school district? And in doing so, you positively impact the kids and the families academically, socially, and financially. So again, I make my case for you to please reconsider and allow the siblings of existing Segal High School students who would otherwise be in a separate high school to attend the same high school that their older brother or sister is attending. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Stephen Smith?
Yes, sir.
You have three minutes also, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, I have just a statement I want to read. Let's see here. My name's Stephen Smith and I represent parents whose sons participate in the wrestling program at Blackman High School and several hundred other parents who have been closely monitoring the sudden suspension of Coach Jack Blosser. In recent years, we have seen numerous wrestlers at Blackman suffer through debilitating injuries and even antibiotic resistant staph infection from poor, from poor practice conditions. The situation surrounding Mr. Blosser's suspension is very concerning to us because it seems that he was at worst targeted and at best he has been unfairly treated. A third period teacher refused to admit a sick student to class and sent the student to Mr. Blosser's room, but only Mr. Blosser is accused of not abiding by the school's policy regarding sick students. Mr. Blosser separated the sick student from the rest of his class because the student complained about feeling very ill and in fact looked sick, even though he was fever free. The fact that Mr. Blosser pointed out to Mrs. Vic, the school principal, Mrs. Fisher, a vice principal, Mrs. Barnes, Director of Human Resources for the school district, and Mrs. McLeod, legal counsel for the school district, that the school policy had in fact changed was completely ignored and dismissed out of hand. In my hand is the official Rutherford County School Policy dated August the 12th, 2009, which is available to any parent, teacher, Rutherford County Administrator, and school board member. The policy can be printed directly from the homepage of the Blackman High School website. Directly from the policy, it reads, "Students and staff who appear to have, who appear to have flu-like illness should be sent to a room separate from others until they can be sent home. CDC recommends that they wear a surgical mask if possible and that those who care for ill students and staff wear protective gear such as a mask." Mr. Blosser was handed a suspension letter seconds after explaining his actions to Mrs. McLeod, Mrs. Barnes, and Mrs. Vic. The suspension letter was dated October the 28th, but his discussion with Mrs. McLeod, Mrs. Barnes, and Mrs. Vic took place on October the 29th. Where was the fair and impartial questioning that could have easily resolved this entire affair? This situation would not, would not exist if one, if the third period teacher would have kept the student in class like he should have instead of sending him to Mr. Blosser's classroom. The situation would not exist if two, Mrs. Fisher would have properly understood the policy regarding sick students. Rather than condemning Mr. Blosser, she should in fact have congratulated a first-year teacher on his adhering to school policy.
Time is...
Is it, am I closing? Okay, I'll go to my ending statement. And this has to do with Mr. Lawson, is that okay?
Go ahead.
We now see that Mr. Dan Lawson is nominated to give Mr. Blosser a fair and impartial hearing. Mr. Lawson is the Director of Schools in Tallahassee and has been the pattern in this school district and school board to use local qualified officers who are usually judges or local attorneys to hear these cases, not someone working in the education industry. This recent effort shows us that this is an effort perhaps not to find the truth and it concerns us very greatly. This raises questions and red flags to us. We would hope that the school board would consider a local qualified attorney, someone who is known to be impartial, and so we have our concerns there. So thank you for your time, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Gill, number eight.
We were scheduled to have a follow-up status of previous board action items. Mr. Clarity was going to have a PowerPoint presentation on progress at Cannon Middle, Oakland Middle, Oakland High School roof replacement, Rutherford County Tennis Complex, Central Magnet School, and also the renovation at McFadden. But Mr. Clarity is ill, the matter of fact, he went to hospital yesterday, he's doing fine with some chest pains and, you know, we're certainly pleased with that and relieved that he's doing okay, but who better to report on the progress of those buildings than him? So we'll do that at the next board meeting, just give you an update.
Number nine.
Waiver for new high school PE credit. With the adoption of the American Diploma Project, an additional one-half fiscal education credit was included in the new 22 credit requirement. State Board Policy states, "The fiscal education requirement may be met by substituting a documented and equivalent time of physical activity in other areas including marching band, JROTC, cheerleading, interscholastic athletics, and school-sponsored intramural athletics or other areas such as dance would be approved by the local Board of Education. The system may choose how they reflect the participation on the transcript with notation that it substitutes for the half-credit PE. Rutherford County High School Principals recommend we allow substituting one-half PE credit for the activities included in this motion. Therefore, we are recommending that we approve the waiver of one-half fiscal education high school credit in school-sponsored participation for rugby, cheerleading, ice hockey, swim team, dance team, lacrosse, trap shooting, bowling, half timers, TWAA sports, including but not limited to football, golf, cross country, basketball, wrestling, baseball, soccer, tennis, track, bowling, volleyball, softball, and state Board of Education-approved courses in marching band and ROTC third year."
You so moved. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. We should pass this, number 10.
Financial matters. Major capital projects fund 177 amendment. In Fund 177, major capital projects, three projects included in the 2008-2009 budget for Fund 177 had not been completed as of June 30th, 2009. This amendment takes $427,144 from Fund 177 fund balance and budgets it to line items in Function 91300, Education Capital Projects. Most of the funds will go to maintenance and repair services for buildings. This $427,144 is needed to fund the completion of the following three projects. John Coleman renovation, $385,144. Smyrna High School roof, $20,128. Christiana Elementary roof, $21,872, for a total of $427,144. These are not new funds, $650,748 is unexpended. Budgeted funds went to fund balance on July 1st, 09, and the $427,144 needs to be rebudgeted. The $233,000, $604 difference that remains in fund balance is the savings of last year's projects. Recommend that you amend, that you amend $427,144 from Fund 177 fund balance and budget it to the object codes as presented in Function 91300, Education Capital Projects.
I've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Don't move.
Have a second. I'll say. Any discussion? It appears this is just an accounting thing, situation because of the end of the period.
Yeah, end of year.
I almost wish you'd read that savings on last year's projects again. It's a tremendous savings.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Pass this, 11.
Okay, we have several policies that we're conducting the second reading on. First one is...
We'll just, we'll read all through them and then if one, somebody wants to call one out, they can call one out, go ahead and...
Sure. A, revision of Policy 3.206, Community Use of School Facilities. Revision will allow school facilities to be used for public, community, or recreational purposes regardless of whether a benefit may accrue to the prospective user. Each organization will be required to obtain approval of the principal prior to the request being submitted for the board for approval. The director will implement procedures requiring for-profit groups to pay minimum fee of $150 per day for use of school facilities. Revision of Policy 4.60. Any questions on A? Revision of Policy 4.60, the grading system. Revision will remove a section of the policy related to semester exams. This portion of the policy will be converted to an administrative procedure that will reflect changes in the State Board of Education's rules and regulations. This policy revision will also allow grades to be averaged if a student repeats one semester of a course. C, revision of Policy 6.409, Child Abuse and Neglect. Revision will add language required by state law regarding notification to parents if a suspected abuse occurs on school property or while the child was under supervision or care of the school. D, Evaluation, Policy 5.109, revision of Policy 5.109. The revision will add the date by which teacher evaluation shall be completed. E, Revision of Policy 5.310, Vacations and Holidays. The revision would add the language, 12-month full-time employees to the policy as those employees are eligible for the applicable vacations and holidays. F, Adoption of New Policy 5.6101, Employee Participation in Recreational and/or Fitness Activities. The policy would limit employee participation in recreational and physical fitness activities to those that occur during the regular day as part of the educational curriculum. Employee participation in recreational and/or physical fitness activities other than those specified would be voluntary and injuries that result from such participation would not be covered by the board's on-the-job injury program. Revision of Policy 6.204, Attendance of Non-Resident Students. The revision would delete a section of the policy allowing students who lived outside of the county at the time of adoption of the policy to continue to attend Rutherford County schools. And I might add that this is the second reading, we have a policy committee comprised of the board, parents, principals, teachers, and other stakeholders in the school system that partook in this.
Any questions on any of these, Mr. Glass?
Back on the community use of school facilities, there is language that the for-profit, it has to have children, our children involved, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions, Doris?
On F, can, can you give us an example of when an employee would not be covered? What kind of type of activities?
What, faculty ball games, field days, would that be covered?
Field days would be covered.
Okay. Give, you got other examples, Agent?
Party at skate rink.
After-school skating parties, those kinds of things would be voluntary, it would not be covered.
So if you go roller skating with kids...
Don't roller skate.
Don't roller skate, right.
That's, that's our workers' cost.
Yeah. It's sad, that's, that's a sad situation if that happens because the kids really, really enjoy it.
because the kids really enjoy.
Absolutely.
Principals and assistant principals, they get nothing.
They sure do.
I hate to see this happen, but I understand the reasons with the insurance.
There's a considerable amount of money spent every year on the job injuries too that's absorbed by the county.
Mr. Gillian, you can't do what I did with y'all. I went skating with you. I'm sorry.
So recommend that you approve the new policy 5.6101 and revised policies 3.206, 4.600, 6.409, 5.109, 5.310, and 6.204 in the second reading as recommended by the policy committee.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. 12.
Revised Policy. Revision of Policy 6.314, Corporal Punishment. Revision would remove the section of the policy stating the following. In determining the use and degree of corporal punishment, consideration will be given to the age, sex, size, physical, and emotional condition of the child. I recommend that you waive the second meeting limitation and approve Policy 6.314 as presented by the policy committee.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion. Have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Superintendent to kind of explain that in common language to why the revision was there?
I think it came down to the state, didn't it, Angel, that we had to... Yeah, please. Mr. McLeod is our staff attorney. He handles this stuff.
There was a civil rights complaint filed against pretty much every district in the state of Tennessee regarding this section of this policy. It's a TSBA policy that most districts have adopted, and there is some reference to age and sex of a child. And the civil rights group argued that on its face, that language could be discriminatory, and so TSBA, in conjunction with the Tennessee Department of Education, agreed to remove that portion of the policy to satisfy the complaints for the entire state. And it has to be done by January in order to do that.
I want the public to know that it's not just something we're just coming up with these things. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. 13.
Student Discipline Appeal. The Board has been requested to review the November 12th, 2009 decision of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority to uphold the remandment of a student from Blackman High School to Smyrna West Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of Policy 6.309. The policy states that the Board shall review the record and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA, the Disciplinary Hearing Authority; two, modify the decision to a lesser penalty; three, grant a second hearing, which would be before the Board; or four, deny a request for a Board hearing. And the Board was provided information pertaining to that remandment.
What's the pleasure of the Board, Mr. Blair?
I move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes.
14. Termination of Non-Tenured Teacher, Appointment of Independent Hearing Officer. Superintendent suspended Mr. Jack Blosser, a non-tenured teacher from Blackman High School, without pay with the intent to terminate. Mr. Blosser has been charged with improper conduct, unbecoming a member of the teaching profession, and insubordination. State law allows a non-tenured teacher to have a hearing before an impartial hearing officer if he or she choose to contest the termination of his or her employment. Mr. Blosser has requested a hearing, and the Board of Education therefore needs to appoint someone to serve as a hearing officer in this matter. Mr. Dan Lawson has expressed his willingness to serve in this capacity if selected to do so by the Board. Mr. Lawson is the Director of Tallahassee City Schools. Before reading the recommendation, I'd say, Ms. McLeod did some research on this. This is done statewide in many cases where other superintendents serve as independent hearing officers, kind of addressed that issue given the gentleman's talk a while ago.
I did do some research with some other counties to see who they were using as impartial hearing officers, and this was being done in several counties that I spoke with, particularly in Hamilton County. This has been done for the entire time that the attorney who represents them now has been serving as their counsel, is Scott Bennett, who I know some of you have heard speak at probably TSBA events. It is permitted under the statute. To his knowledge and to my knowledge, it has not been challenged. There's no case law to say that you can't use this person. It is cost-effective for the school system, and we would reimburse him for travel costs. He was recommended by Mr. Bennett. It's not somebody that we just picked out of the air, has some experience in this area. And so there's absolutely no reason why we cannot select this person as our impartial hearing officer.
Okay, any questions?
Have we had any problems with the selection of the previous people that have heard these cases? Have we had any particular problem, or is it just a more financial?
I'm not sure what you mean by a problem, but in terms of cost, it is fairly expensive.
Well, you mentioned the cost.
We pay the entire cost for the hearing officer. And they generally, if it's a local attorney bill at their hourly rate, so you're talking about $200, $250 an hour for a whole-day hearing usually, plus the cost of the transcript and the court reporter.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question about with the statement without pay with the intent to terminate. Is that part of the hearing, the suspension, or the termination?
The termination. And if he were reinstated, he would be reimbursed any wages that he forfeited.
That he's lost.
That he's lost.
We're required to do that by state law. You have to suspend first and then give them notice that you intend to terminate, which we have done with Mr. Blosser. And then he has an opportunity to appeal that in a timeframe, and he's done that.
So he was just suspended until the...
Until he had the opportunity to appeal, yes, sir.
Yes.
Do principals still recommend termination? Is that true in this case?
Any other questions, Dawes?
Just a comment. Mr. Blosser is going to get a full and impartial hearing. He can bring to the hearer a fact, any information he wishes to bring. And Mr. Lawson will be quite familiar with school law, which gives, I think assures him of a fair hearing before this hearer of the facts.
Any other questions? Go ahead and read the recommendation.
So I'm recommending that you approve the appointment of Dan Lawson as the impartial hearing officer for the termination hearing of Jack Blosser.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. General discussion by the Board. Any discussion? No discussion tonight? I guess the cold weather's got there, but... All minds at ease. Beating adjourned.